Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bloomington Common Council Regular Session Meeting of the 18th of September 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Here.
Chopra?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rallo?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. Before I go to the Agenda Summation, we have an announcement from our Vice President.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As you know, we have American Sign Language services for our regular council meetings, special sessions. We have an agreement with the interpreters that they work two hours only. So tonight, if our meeting lasts longer than two hours, I just want to let people know that Sandy will be leaving at two hours because we want to be respectful of her time. So, thank you.
Thank you. So let's be mindful of that. Here's the Agenda Summation for this evening, and if you would like an agenda, you may find it beside the Clerk on her desk. We have no minutes for approval this evening. Then we will go to reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and then we'll have reserved time for the public of 20 minutes for items not on our agenda. We'll then go to appointments to boards and commissions before we go to legislation for second reading and resolutions. And we have four items this evening for second reading. The first is ordinance 1918 to authorize the issuance of bonds by the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission pursuant to Indiana Code 36714.3.5. And that received a committee of the whole action on 11th of September 2019 of due pass 8-0. Second item is ordinance 1915, an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage works revenue bonds for the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Sewage Works refunding revenue bonds of 2019 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. That received a committee of the whole recommendation on 11th of September 8-0. Third item is ordinance 1916 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater rate adjustment. Committee of the whole action on that was due pass 701 on September 11th. Fourth and final item for second reading is ordinance 1917 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, BMC, entitled wastewater regarding amending Bloomington Municipal Code 10.08.040 connection fees to allow waiver of those fees in two limited circumstances to promote conversion of septic to sewer and to complement certain city affordable housing programs. That received a committee of the whole recommendation due pass 8-0 on the 11th of September. We'll then go to legislation for first reading, and we have one item, which is ordinance 1919 to amend Title 2 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Title 2 to Create a Procedure to Address Conflicts of Interest by Employees Responsible for Issuing Permits. We've then reserved an additional 25 minutes for public comment after that before we go to council schedule and then adjournment. So, moving on, we have no approval of minutes, and so we will go now to reports from council members, and I will begin on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. This evening, I would like to offer kudos and appreciation to Joe Hoffman, who serves as the Chair of the Bloomington Plan Commission. He has been a member of the Plan Commission for many, many years, and he has announced his retirement. He actually served his last meeting with the Plan Commission at our last regular meeting. He is staying on for the remainder of these final special sessions as we wrap up the amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. But I wanted to say many kind words about his leadership, his steadiness. Many of us on this council who have also served on the Plan Commission have had the opportunity to work with Joe. And anyone from the community that offers their time and their talent and their attention to the degree that Joe Hoffman has done certainly deserves our debt of gratitude and our thanks tonight. So, he has one more official meeting coming up on Monday, the 23rd, in which we do wrap up our amendment work from the Plan Commission and then pass the UDO on to this body. And so, my thanks to you, Joe, and again, we appreciate your service to Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, I've served with Joe, and it's hard to imagine how many hours he put in. You know, just this recent UDO, there were two meetings, a six-hour meeting, a four-hour meeting, a two-hour meeting. Susan can attest to that. And then multiply that by 18 years, 20 years?
Just 20 some.
20 some years. I mean, that is real heavy lifting. But you know, one of the issues that came out of those UDO hearings is something I want to talk about. There's a zoning change proposed for Bloomington that will affect everyone who owns a home. The proposal is to allow duplexes and triplexes as a conditional use in single-family neighborhoods everywhere. Suburbs, allowed. You'll have to sue to enforce your covenants. Core neighborhoods, allowed. You bought with the confidence that your local government wouldn't change the zoning after you made your lifetime commitment to that neighborhood. So sad, too bad. This will come to council, so people will have a chance to talk about that again. And this is actually good news for owners of and investors in rental property. They can convert their rentals into denser duplexes and triplexes. Their property values will actually increase the day this is voted into law. The large rental owners, like the one who was recently sued by hand, will make out like bandits. But this is not good news if you're a homeowner in Bloomington. And here is a national update. This is very recent. House Representative Trey Hollingsworth is cosponsoring the YIMBY Act called HB 4351. The Senate version is cosponsored by Todd Young with Brian Schatz and Denny Heck. So these are Democrats and Republicans both. The idea is that if they don't like how our zoning is written, they will withhold CDBG money from this community. That CDBG money is meant for funding low and moderate-income persons of our community. If they don't think the community has liberalized its zoning enough, that federal money will stop coming to Bloomington. If this passes. Hollingsworth said, "A safe, stable home serves as a bedrock for our families. Our federal laws should encourage building affordable housing for our neighbors, not driving up costs and creating barriers through burdensome and restrictive land use policies." But locally, in our college town, it's homeownership that provides safe and stable homes for families and a chance to build equity and family security. Turning local ownership into more rentals is the long-term reality of the proposed changes to single-family zoning. Investors and developers will love this bill. Republicans already love it. Local discretion must be exercised to not destroy our already-dense core neighborhoods for this new urban renewal project. Unlike Seattle, we have room for added density without cannibalizing our existing working and middle-class neighborhoods. Let's find a Bloomington way to add density wisely. Changing density everywhere is a siren song, and we must use our best common sense to resist it. Or do we join with Todd Young and Trey Hollingsworth on a bill President Trump will likely sign? That gives me reason to pause and think. We can trust them to look out for our own best interests, can't we? I think we better look out for our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterbaum. And just a slight correction. Joe Hoffman has served 32 years on the Plan Commission.
That's mind-boggling.
Yes, and September 9th, 2019 was Joe Hoffman Day in Bloomington because of his service. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I would also like to offer my congratulations and respect to Joe Hoffman as well. Many of us have served on the Plan Commission. I was there 15 years ago. And fortunately, we didn't have to so much deal with behemoth structures at the time. But my indoctrination was south of Tab Road, walking on empty property, looking at the slope and some endangered plant life that was down along a creek. That was part of learning about whether to approve a petition to build on that area or not. So, I will also say that I only lasted about nine months, because that's a lot of work, a whole lot of work. So I do respect Mr. Hoffman and wish him well. One other comment to, I don't know, maybe two years ago, there was an event down at the bus at the Transit Center, having to do with the Rosa Parks Celebration and the opening of that and all that. But in giving that speech, one of the things that I said was, and I fully believe this, is that the power in the people is greater than the people in power. And I just kind of want that to marinate just for a second. The power of the people is greater than the people in power. I'm saying that to say, we just heard my colleague, Councilwoman Sterbaum, talk about new legislation at the state. We are the people, and if we don't want those people representing us, then we have to vote, we have to register, and we have to get people in there that represent us. Same thing for us sitting up here. The exact same thing. This also goes with the UDO. So I just encourage everyone to participate, and hopefully, the will of the people will prevail, and then we can move forward to deal with the growth, the future growth of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
I think it was Archimedes who said, "Give me a lever and a place to stand, and I can move the world." The question is, where are we standing? Certain locations provide better leverage than others. So it's nice to say that the people have power, but can they really wield it? Are they standing in the right location where they can make that change happen? I want to thank everyone here on this day as for the special session that we held on Monday. It was a very difficult problem that we tried to solve. I think we untangled, if I'm going to use another Greek reference, the gordian knot of that piece of legislation. But I mean, it was an unusual thing that required a lot of cooperation from everyone, and I think it's one of the decisions that has been most, I don't know how to put it, honestly, decided by everyone in years. Everyone came to it in good faith with honestly held beliefs, and I am humbled and grateful that we were able to do that meeting. In other news, this Friday, there will be a panel discussion on WFIU's noon edition about parking. It is the most popular topic that I deal with in District 6, being the center of the city where all the regulated parking tends to congregate. I encourage you all to listen to that, ask questions. I also want to encourage people, since parking is a perennial topic, that the next meeting of the Parking Commission is Thursday, the 26th. And we have a number of items that will be on the agenda, which will be published soon by the Planning Department, probably tomorrow. But we do have a Parking Commission that meets. There are openings on the Commission. If you are interested in serving and talking about parking, no time like the present. I hear a volunteer right now, actually. Please contact the council office or the mayor's office. I believe most of the positions are mayoral that are open. If you are a city resident, we've now made it a little bit easier for you to apply. So Parking Commission, every fourth Thursday of the month, here in the Hooker Room and City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a comment? Councilmember Chopra, do you have a comment?
Sure. I'll go with it. And I rarely get called on towards the end, which is kind of fun, because I can just make my comments on other people's comments. I would just want to point out one thing in response to Councilmember Sterbaum's criticism of the proposed UDO and the zoning changes in single-family neighborhoods. He kept talking about homeowners. This is bad for homeowners. The homeowners are have-nots. We're talking about the people who can afford to have a home. I don't know the statistics. I wish I could have asked Ms. Sims, who's here. She could probably tell me what percentage of Bloomingtonians actually even own a home. But should we be more concerned about the homeowners, or should we be concerned also with those people who work at low-paying jobs inside our city, very near the downtown, and serve us every day at the library or at restaurants, who can't even afford to live or even find a home within their range, close to their home, where they're forced to live further and further out, and then have problems with transportation and so on? So when you hear this debate about the UDO, words matter. And I think the key word in that argument is homeowners. This is bad for homeowners, bad for the haves, but not for the have-nots. That's why we need to change the densities in those neighborhoods. And then, my second comment was as to the meeting on Monday night that was called on Friday at 4:00 or something PM. I did not go to that meeting on Monday, so by all, Councilmembers Volin surely could not have met me as well. I didn't go. I didn't appreciate a last-minute calling of a meeting. I also didn't appreciate the idea of reconsidering a vote that the council made. There were a couple of problems I had with that. Number one is that we need to have confidence in what our council does, and that when we make a vote and we make a decision, it's what we mean, and it means what we want. When you go and do these reconsideration motions on Monday evenings at the Convention Center, number one, that's not good for the public at all. It's late notice, and you're very likely to have public show up to a meeting like that when they are noticed on a Friday evening. And number two, I think it just, it gives the public a perception, rightfully so, that the council is willing to make a decision and then get talked out of it right away. And I think that it's important to know that your council members, when they vote, really think long and hard about their vote, and then that should be the final say. So, I didn't go on Monday night for that reason, and also because I had to take my kids to soccer. But I didn't feel like it was a priority for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you have a comment?
Yes, I have a report from the Climate Leadership Summit, the Indiana Climate Leadership Summit, that I attended last Thursday with others from Bloomington, both city and county government, who are concerned about climate change. And the keynote speaker was David Orr, retired professor from Oberlin College, which is my alma mater. And I just wanted to relay a few things that he said, because I thought they were very insightful. Climate change has kind of three aspects. There's the technical aspect, where, you know, we hope we can engineer our way out of some of these negative impacts. There's the economic aspect, of course. If we were to tax carbon, that would go a long way. And then there's the political, and that aspect is what he spent the rest of his talk discussing. And he said something very interesting that, you know, some may label as un-American or unpatriotic, because we always have this perception of our country as being the richest country in the world. But in fact, we're only the richest country in the world because we didn't pay the costs that went along with our rapid development. We didn't pay the cost of what our rapid depletion of natural resources actually had on the environment. And even in the past 100 years, not talking about future, in the past 100 years, Indiana has had 5.5 inches more rainfall and has gotten 1.2 degrees warmer, and the worst is yet to come. So sure, if you don't pay for the costs of your development, you're the richest country in the world. And then he really got to the crux of the matter, is how are we going to really make the changes we need to have a habitable climate in 30 or 40 years? And it really comes down to how much power people have in this country. Is this really still a democracy? The Economist magazine did a study in 2018 on different governments throughout the world, and labeled the United States as a flawed democracy. There's such a vast unequal distribution of wealth. And when you have such vast divergences of the top 1% having, you know, thousands of times more wealth than most everybody else, it really means democracy doesn't work, because their vote counts more, because they can donate. And we all know candidates need a lot of money to win. This idea that started with Ronald Reagan in the 80s, that government is the problem, led to defunding government, led to government being less effective, which made it look like more of a problem. So it was kind of a vicious cycle. The other aspect that led Professor Orr to question how democratic we really still are as a country is the misrepresentation in the Senate, where Montana, which has, what, 5 million people total? No, 3 million, I think, has the same representation in the Senate as California, which has, I don't know, many, many more millions of people. And actually, the prediction is that 30% of the US population will elect 70% of US senators by 2040. That doesn't sound democratic to me. Then there's a problem of gerrymandering, of course. Partisan legislatures on the state level make the districts that decide who gets to send people to Congress. The power of corporations, I already mentioned. With Citizens United, they can give as much as they want to political action committees and support candidates. And Russian interference. He put up a graphic about all of the elections. It's not just in the United States. All around the world, that Russian hackers and Russian bots have infiltrated to influence the outcome of their elections. So, it was pretty gloomy, this talk, but it just served to remind us that we need to redouble our efforts to elect people who really understand and recognize and acknowledge the facts, the science, that says climate change is happening and the effects will be severe. If you want your children and grandchildren to have a long, healthy life, you got to care about climate change. He also said, "If you are apolitical, you are a logical fallacy." Meaning, by being apolitical, you're just accepting the status quo. So, I don't think anybody can afford to be apolitical when the future of the human race is at stake, and that's why I am very appreciative of the people here locally and across the world who are organizing the Global Climate Strike this Friday. There will be a rally starting in Dunmeadow on the IU campus at 12:30, and then making their way to City Hall. So I urge you all to reflect upon what you can do in your own life or through political action to make sure that we leave a planet to our children and grandchildren that is going to be habitable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I wanted to send my thanks to the county commissioners for calling a work session on Monday for the, both counties, city council, county council, the mayor, the commissioners to try to make some headway on the plan for the Convention Center. I think we got some questions answered. We had more questions, but it felt good for people to come together and talk. And I am looking forward to our next meeting, which will be between the county counselors and the city counselors. It is yet to be determined, though. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to note that regarding the meeting, City Council meeting special session on Monday, where we heard the single petition, the plan unit development that came back at the request of several council members, that although I didn't support it, I very much appreciate all of the work that went in in terms of negotiation with the petitioner, because it turned out to be a much better project in the process. Okay, let's move now to reports from mayor and city offices. Are there any? Seeing none. Are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none. We will go now to the public. If you'd like to make...
I'm going to show hands, I don't want to speak.
Good idea.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, we'll limit comments to four minutes per person. Just as a preview, this is what the tone I'll use sounds like. There's a small beep that starts your period. When it's time to start winding up, you'll hear this gong. When your time is over, you'll hear the beeping three times, like so. So just in case anybody's wondering, that's what the sound effects are for. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Paul Post, President of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88. Since the last time we spoke, several things have happened. We have had the opportunity to speak with several of you about the issues we're facing and answer your questions. I have shared your positive words with the membership. Thank you for those and your attention in this matter. Please let us know if we can continue to answer questions. We all want a signed contract, just like you, and hopefully, just like Mayor Hamilton. Having one provides the necessary framework to successfully provide law enforcement services to the community in an organized manner. Going without one will bring chaos and uncertainty, not only to our members and their families, but to the city as well. Going into 2020 without a signed contract, as threatened by the city attorney, will result in more officers leaving this department. They have put up with a lot over the past two years of this contract negotiation, and to reach that point will drive them away. This will only serve to further the recruiting and retention problem we have now, and continue to drive up the overtime costs we spoke about last. Last week, BPD hired and swore in four new officers. This brings BPD up to 99 officers, or only four short of the budget staffing of 103 officers. We hope that this group will all pass the rigorous training of the next several months, and then will choose to stay with the department for a long career. Unfortunately, in this same time period, another senior officer announced his leaving the department next month. He is yet another example of an experienced officer who is choosing to leave Bloomington for an agency with higher pay and better benefits. The cycle will continue. We're up four, now down one. Still below fully staffed, and still well below the national average of officers per population level. We've also seen an outpouring of positive comments toward our plight, that the public understands and supports what we've tried to accomplish in this contract negotiation. Fixing a major recruiting and retention problem requires financial commitment and an acceptance of the reality of the current police hiring market. Thank you to the public who spoke out in support of your officers. It is greatly appreciated. Tonight, my colleagues will present further examples to you and speak about the lack of sustainability in operating a police department in this fashion. We will address some of the falsehoods put forth by the city team lately about our benefits. Make no mistake, this negotiation is centered on the fact that BPD is no longer market competitive. We are asking to make this four-year contract a stepping stone toward correcting that downward slide, with the knowledge that it will take the same effort in 2022. We cannot fix the recruiting and retention problem at this agency without that commitment. We hope that you will continue to look closely at these issues as we enter the 2020 budget hearings, and encourage the mayor and the city team to continue to work with us on achieving a fair and competitive contract. Your officers and their families deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Again, the gong means you have a minute...
Again, the gong means you have a minute or 30 seconds to wrap up, so it's not the end of your time. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Drew Bazan. I am Bloomington Police Department's Second Shift Representative. In addition to the salary issue with this contract negotiation, we are also facing the threat of losing a time-honored employee benefit. Across most shift-type work, regardless of profession, seniority is used to determine shift placement. At BPD, that has been the practice for 20-plus years and has worked well. Everyone knows in shift work, when you're young and starting out in the profession, you have to work the non-preferred shifts until you gain some seniority in that organization. That's not a new phenomenon. Unfortunately, the city team has made it clear that they are determined to remove this employee benefit so that the administration can place officers where they want, not where the officers want. This lack of control will prove devastating to personal life planning and will further drive officers away from this A and C. We will continue to reject proposals that attack this benefit. The argument being put forth is that second shift is unsafe, too young and inexperienced. We don't deny the average age of the department is quite young now, but I'd like to point out that this was caused by the ongoing retention issue. Experienced officers continue to leave the agency when they feel underappreciated and underpaid. As a current member of Second Shift, I'm in a position to provide accurate insight to the state of that shift. I'd like to begin with some numbers. Current staffing for active field-training officers, these are the officers that train the new recruits, for each shift, First Shift has four, Third Shift has eight, while Seconds is in the middle with five. The number of patrol rifles fielded on Third Shift is nine, on Seconds it is seven. Les-lethal launchers, these are 12-gauge shotguns that have been converted to shoot beanbag projectile. Third Shift has five, while Seconds has almost double at nine. CERT officers, these are officers that are part of our CERT team, without including supervisors, per shift, First Shift has one, Third Shift has three, and Seconds has two. If we include the supervisors into that count, First Shift has three, Third Shift has four, as well as Second Shift has four. The Patrol Division operates with four supervisors, one lieutenant and three sergeants, assigned to each shift. Afternoon shift was assigned only three supervisors at the beginning of 2019 and had only two supervisors from mid-March to mid-May until another supervisor was added. Second shift was not fully staffed with supervisors until the beginning of June. If there truly was a safety issue with afternoon shift, their officers, would it not be reasonable that the staff, correction, would it not be reasonable to staff the shift with four supervisors and the most experienced supervisors? In 2019, several officers have furthered their careers by becoming instructors, hostages and negotiators, detectives, or promoted to patrol sergeant. In 2018, or correction, in 2018, a Second Shift officer was named Officer of the Year, and many officers received recognition for their efforts throughout the 2018 fiscal year. December of 2018, an incident occurred involving an afternoon shift officer taking gunfire from a mentally unhealthy suspect. That officer was able to radio out critical information to other responding officers, and Second Shift was able to take the suspect into custody with no officer injury. The professionalism and teamwork of those officers was crucial in the successful outcome of that high-risk incident. The handling of that incident was commanded by administrators throughout BPD for its exemplary execution. I can confidently say that Second Shift is a safe shift. I invite anybody to come on a ride-along with any Second Shift officer so that they may witness their professionalism and training hard at work in the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeff Rogers. I'm a member of the Bloomington Police Department. Tonight, I would like to provide additional information to support our position on recruitment and retention. The last time I spoke to you, I gave you the overtime expenditures year-to-date. I'd like to tell you those numbers were incomplete. Whenever an officer works overtime, they have two options. They can either take the overtime, meaning be paid for it, or they can take comp time or paid time off. Because it's paid time off, it still has a cash value. 2018, the overtime was $695,000 plus $202,000 in comp time, for a total of $897,000. 2019, year-to-date, $571,000 plus another $141,000 in comp time. Over $712,000 year-to-date. Right now, it's projected over $991,000 for this year. The last time we spoke to you, the deputy mayor made some comments the next day on a radio program. I would like to address some of those comments. He indicated that the unlimited sick time for officers was a benefit to us. Police officers are on the city's sick policy, were required to provide documentation after three occurrences of being sick in a calendar year, just like the rest of city employees. In 2018, police officers used a total of 446 days off for the entire year. Now, over 235 days were used for just five officers that had a severe injury or illness. The average was 4.7 days per officer. That's how many sick days were used per officer. This year, we've used 156 days. Right now, it's an average of 1.6 days, and we're projected to use 234, which would be an average of 2.5 days per year. Now, if we were on the city's sick time policy, meaning we obtain paid time off at the period of 13 days per year. So last year, the city would have owed the police officers an additional 789 days off. This year, it's projected that they would owe us an additional 1,001 days off. So this is not a benefit to the police officers. This is a benefit to the city for us being on unlimited sick. There was a direct comparison made to Lafayette Police Department. We didn't make that comparison. The third-party company that was hired by the city to do a salary study stated that Lafayette PD is the closest comparison to Bloomington in this state. The mayor, I'm sorry, the deputy mayor made some comments about longevity pay and how that can change what an officer is actually paid. Well, a one-year officer at Lafayette makes $11,000 more than a one-year officer at Bloomington. A 20-year officer at Lafayette makes $10,500 more than a 20-year officer at Bloomington. So your longevity is not making much of a change on that. Concerning the IU Police Department and officer ratio, IUPD, Sheriff's Department, State Police, all respond to BPD in emergency situations. We do the same for those agencies. Jurisdiction determines which agency takes the call. I wish that IUPD counted for us, but they do not, and they cannot be added to our numbers, because they don't handle calls that take place off of campus. Just like if a student goes to a party at an apartment in the city, gets robbed or beat up, they may live on campus, but we still investigate that crime because of where it happened. We have the facts and data to support we are underpaid and overworked compared to other agencies, both smaller and larger in size. Of course, the city is going to try to downplay those numbers, say things like everyone feels that they're underpaid because they don't want to accept the scope of the problem. The city has stated their cornerstone is to bring the city into the future and ensure that employees have market-competitive salaries. We're not asking to be paid the most. In fact, the last proposal that we gave to the city, it would have taken us from being paid 66th in rank in the state to 34th in rank, even though we are the seventh-largest city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jacob Woods. I'm the night shift representative for the Bloomington Police Department Bargaining Unit. I'd like to speak to you tonight about sustainability. That is a key word for many previous city administrations and also this current city administration. It's easily defined as the ability to be maintained at a certain rate or level. Our staffing levels at the police department now are the same as they were in 2009. Only with a much higher call volume, would you consider that to be sustainable? Is that safe for our officers? Is that healthy for their mental well-being? In addition, we're first responders, and we deal with more and more individuals suffering from drug addictions, the opioid crisis, mental health issues, and homelessness. Every day, our police officers are at the front line to take care of these individuals and these issues, and to make sure that those people get the right services and in touch with resources that they need. All done at the same level of staffing as we had 10 years ago. You see, we all recognize that there's a crisis, but somehow we ignore it or take for granted that our officers are taking on more and more, but getting less. That is not sustainable. Access to services and response to emergency calls for service are primarily handled by uniform patrol officers. Thus, the patrol is the primary function of a police department. Our patrol officers have routinely been taken from our manpower on patrol and placed into other specialties or different departments, as additional roles have been created. This has happened since the early 2000s. At that point in time, our manpower has been shrinking from there, with very few positions added to make up for that. Since the early 2000s, we've had eight supervisor roles, which would be sergeants and lieutenants, created, and that manpower was pulled specifically from patrol. We've had six downtown resource officer positions created, which removed patrol officers from our call rotation. We've also had six detective positions created, which were also taken from patrol. These positions were taken to address specific needs of the department. That's not denied. However, the need for patrol officers was never diminished. The staffing decisions were understandable and necessary for a growing city and a developing community. In this timeframe, those 20 patrol spots were used to expand or create other divisions. Only seven positions were created for the department to make up for those numbers. Currently, we are at 103 officers budgeted, with only 99 of those spots filled. This is not sustainable. Just a snapshot, for this month in time, of September of 2019, our shift staffing has or will require overtime for officers to cover 16 shifts. There are 90 shifts, because there are three shifts that work each day in the 30 days. So 16 of those shifts will have mandatory overtime or voluntary overtime accounted for. An additional 16 shifts are staffed below minimum currently and do not have that mandatory overtime placed yet. This has been a consistent issue and is evidenced by increasing amounts of overtime paid each year, specifically to staff the Patrol Division. This is not sustainable. The Bloomington Police Department was once one of the highest-paid agencies in the state and has now fallen to 66th over the last two contracts. Other municipalities, including much smaller ones, have recognized the staffing crisis at hand and are now paying higher wages to their officers to help recruit and maintain staffing levels. The pay increases of 142 agencies from the Indiana Certified Salary List from 2013 to 19 show that Bloomington stands as 134th for those pay increases out of 142. Only Alexandria, Marion, North Vernon, Petersburg, Kokomo, Salem, and Hartford municipalities have had lower pay increases in that timeframe than we have. No wonder we can't struggle, no wonder we're struggling locally and we can't compete. This is not sustainable. We recognize that we don't want to be one of the highest-paid agencies in the state, or even close. We just want to be competitive and fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. At the special session, you guys approved a apartment complex. And one of the conditions, as I understood it, was that they would give some amount of money, $300,000, to fill out some sidewalks missing on Walnut and on 19th Street. And, I mean, mission accomplished, right? That's a joke. It's not. Our mission, I thought, was for the people that lived in that complex to be able to walk to campus. You know, staff had made the claim that they could easily walk to the bus stop, even though there were no sidewalks on the route to the bus stop. Well, so we've addressed the sidewalks going to the bus stop, but campus is about a mile away beyond that, and we need to build the sidewalks all the way to campus. We need to build sidewalks on both sides of Dunn Street between 13th and 17th. We need to build sidewalks on Indiana Avenue. Both of those are in the transportation plan that you just passed a few months ago, that it says they should have sidewalks on both sides of the street. This is not the boonies. It should have sidewalks on both sides of the street. But I think this is a great illustration of how the sidewalk committee works. The number-one thing that the sidewalk committee does is they make sure they don't spend money that somebody else could spend. So they waited. You know, this 19th Street connection was on their list, but they waited. They didn't do it last year, because if they'd done it last year, they would have wasted some money that now we've got a developer to pay for. Well, I don't care who pays for it, but as long as we're waiting for someone else to pay for it, we're not filling in the gaps in the network. We shouldn't be looking for excuses not to spend on sidewalks. We should be proactively identifying the gaps in the network. And there are some doozies just around campus. There are doozies right downtown. There are just so many sidewalks that we're missing, and the Sidewalk Commission doesn't have any money to speak of. You need to give about $30 million to the Sidewalk Commission. You gave $30 million this year to parking garages. I've heard a suggestion you're going to get that back through user fees. Do we have a gullibility problem? I don't know. You're not going to get all that back through user fees. We need to spend about $30 million on sidewalks, just to have a bare minimum sidewalk network, not to have all the neighborhood streets, just to have the bare minimum so that people can build a building and then walk from that building to campus. Otherwise, we can't keep building. Now, one of the problems on Dunn Street, it has intermittent sidewalks on both sides, absolutely useless. You're walking in the street on either side. But then you get to 13th Street, and there's actually, there is a sidewalk on 13th Street. Dunn ends at 13th because of the railroad tracks. And that sidewalk is consistently overgrown all summer long. It has been for 20 years. I walked in the street there 20 years ago as an undergraduate, and it's not maintained. The railroad clears it out about once every month and a half, which is not enough in the summer. You guys mow yards, you know this. And they don't actually clear the sidewalk off. They just clear enough that they can say they were there. And then, so it immediately grows back over it just right away, and it's not maintained. Well, we can do something about this. Our transportation plan specifically says you guys need to pass a complete streets policy. It doesn't need to be stellar. It doesn't need to be, it can just be a resolution. Just tell staff, tell the departments, tell the Public Works Department that pedestrian infrastructure is one of your priorities. And then they will have to figure out, how are they going to maintain sidewalks? But if you don't tell them that, then you can't very well blame them that they shirk that duty, because it's not their duty until you give it to them. I just can't believe how long all of you guys have been on this council, and we don't have a complete streets policy. It is mind-boggling. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments this evening for items not on our agenda? If you have, if you would like to leave now, you're welcome to. We'll give a moment to clear the room before we go on. And thank you for, thank you for coming. Okay, we will now move on to appointments of boards and commissions.
Mr. President, we interviewed three outstanding candidates for the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, and we would like to recommend at this time that our two openings be filled by Jarrett Alexander and Corbin Baird.
Okay. All in favor of those appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Baird and Alexander, for your appointment to the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. Are there other appointments, the boards and commissions? Okay, seeing none, then we will now move on to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1918 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1918 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance, sorry, ordinance 1918 to authorize the issuance of bonds by the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission pursuant to Indiana Code 367143.5. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance by the City of Bloomington approves the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission's issuance of bonds payable with tax increment finance TIF from Monroe County's West Side TIF District, a part of which has been annexed by the city. The city's approval for issuing new bonds is required whenever the city has annexed property within a county TIF district, and the tax from that property will be used to repay TIF bonds. See Indiana Code 367143.5. Your committee recommendation is due pass 800.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1918 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Cockrell, welcome.
Good evening.
I think I will give kind of a brief rundown. Again, I think the synopsis says it well that we're coming here because a portion of that TIF district was annexed, and the portion was related where the along Gates Drive... that TIF district was annexed and the portion was really where the, along Gates Drive where the...
You may move a little bit closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm either too close or too far away. I've learned that from public meetings. But essentially, it's the area where the Lowes in that shopping area is, that was annexed between 1992 and, I think, 98. I don't know the exact date. But the projects we're looking at, I think, enhances connectivity in that area and also opens up some property for future development. We're talking about two different road projects. One would be the extension of Profile Parkway to Gates Drive, as well as a connector from Vernal Pike to Gates Drive, along the Sunrise Greeting Court. There will be some roundabouts involved in that as those two come together at that point. At the last meeting, it was asked about what kind of sidewalk infrastructure there was. I'd just like to make sure everybody knows that we are going to put on the Profile Parkway extension a 10-foot multi-use path on one side and a five-foot sidewalk on the other. On the Sunrise Greeting Court extension, there'll be a, it's a fairly large bridge. On one side of that bridge, there'll be a 10-foot multi-use path, and then along the roundabout, there'll be the 10-foot multi-use path on both sides. So I think that was kind of the big concern at the last meeting. I would just note for you, so you guys are comfortable, we had our financial advisor look at this, and his statement was, "The proposed bonds will not impact the parcels or change the TIF revenue received by the city." So I think this is a, this is a great project because I think it enhances both the city areas as well as the county areas, and it really leads to connectivity, to get, to increase safety by getting cars able to get out there without using Currie Pike and get them off Third Street a little bit as well. I'm here to answer questions. We have a redevelopment commission member here. If you have any questions as well?
Terrific, thank you. Are there questions from council? Well, no questions from council, so we will now go to the public on ordinance 1918. Welcome, Ms. Kiesling.
Eris Kiesling, I'm a member of the County Redevelopment Commission, whose members are Jim Sheldon, Rich and Martin, and Pfefferman, I can never say her name. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to partner and to improve our economic development in the West Side, and that's really our goal, trying to get that done. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on ordinance 1918? Okay, we're back to council for final comment. Councilmember Volin, and then Sandberg.
Yes, I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to bring more connectivity to the city, that the West Side was built out with very few routes, and the addition of routes, especially with a greater balance towards, it may not be full equality of pedestrians and bicyclists, but it's, you know, for a new street, it's an excellent development. So I'm nothing but supportive. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I would agree with Commissioner Kiesling and Commissioner Pfefferman, who was here with us last week when we discussed this. This is a great opportunity, a good project, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Other council comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, just a few reflections on this. We had interviewed three excellent candidates for the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability earlier this evening, and we were talking about growth for the sake of growth, which of course is not a smart thing to do, and the importance of taking into account the full impacts of growth, the impacts on our environment, on our use of resources, and on our housing sector as well, where we know we are in great need of more housing, especially affordable housing. So I just hope that the county will take this into consideration, all aspects of any new employers that come into this part of the county, and what impacts they will have further down the line as far as, you know, using up green space, impacts on stormwater, impacts on bringing, are they going to bring most of their employees from outside? Are they going to hire local people? Those kind of things are all very important as we develop further as a city. I also want to just share something, and this is not going to make me vote no, but I had an interesting exchange with the County Highway Department about the pedestrian infrastructure, and I asked, you know, is there going to be green space between the sidewalk or side path and the street? And they said, yes, there'll be a green, you know, strip. And I asked about trees, and they said, well, we're not going to plant any trees. We're going to count on the private property owners to plant the trees. And I said, well, why is that? And they said, overtime trees between the road and sidewalk will damage the sidewalk. And I thought, well, that does happen, but I don't think that's a good reason not to plant trees. I think there are certainly ways in, you know, the last 150 years of development, that cities have done a very fine job in selecting the right trees and planting them in efficient, in the right way, so as to minimize such damage. So I was just very surprised that this seems to be the policy of the county, to not do street trees. I don't know. I don't know if it's a widespread policy or if it was just in this case, but it was sort of disconcerting. So I might follow up on that and ask for further explanation. Anyway, overall, you know, connectivity is good, and I, this will be complete streets because the county is ahead of us on that one. They have a complete streets policy with the MPO, so I will be in support.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Sims.
Did you say me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I almost had a joke there, but I don't think it's appropriate for this.
Oh, go ahead.
No. I do, I support this project wholeheartedly, but part of my comments, and I want to direct this to our attorney, if at all possible, I'm going to look into this, but I might need your help. With the issue of sidewalks and walkability, and this isn't really part of that, or this project, but from Third Street, West Third Street, where you turn into the shopping center, and there's Arby's, and I don't know the name of that street right now, I'm sorry, but that road that goes there, and then the other one goes into the complex, but goes straight down to Jonathan.
Gates Drive.
Gates Drive. I want to know who owns that. Is that city or county property? From Third to Jonathan is all city?
Second.
Well, I know that, I just...
Is it clarified? Is it city?
Going north.
Mr. Congress, nodding yes.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Because as was brought up before, that particular area is sidewalk-starred, and we probably need to look at that. But thank you. That was all my comments. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'd just like to say that I'm in support of this, and I think the county's been doing very good work in terms of connectivity. This is really, as Currie Pike becomes busier, as Third Street becomes busier, it's needed, and I'm glad that you're attending to sidewalks and side paths and so forth, which have been really fantastic out there. Improvements on Currie Pike have been fantastic, and Will Detmer Park and all of that. I think the county's done some outstanding work. So with that, would someone like to call the question?
Call the question.
Okay, questions been called on ordinance 1918. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1918 is adopted, 9-0. Thank you for coming.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1915 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1915 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1915, an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage works revenue bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds of 2019, to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds of 2019 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,650,000. The 2019 bonds will be issued to refund the city's currently outstanding Sewage Works Revenue Bonds of 2004, Sewage Works Revenue Bonds of 2006, Series B, and Sewage Works Revenue Bonds of 2006, Series C, all with the purpose of obtaining lower interest costs and a reduction of debt service payments on such outstanding bonds, thereby achieving significant savings for the city. Your committee due pass recommendation is 800.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1915 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood.
Jeff Underwood, City Controller, and in referring to Councilmember Sims, who is a member of the Utility Service Board, working with the utility staff, bond counsel, and financial advisors, we've been able to flush out some savings on the wastewater department. So we're here to... Maybe that, flush, flush, one of those two. Anyway, we're here to propose the refunding of three state-revolving wastewater bonds, Series 2004, Series 2006, Series B, and 2006, Series C, a total of $7,686 million. We're going to see a savings of approximately $128,000 per year, or $430,000 total. This does not extend the maturities of these bonds. It keeps the same maturity, which for the 2004 series is 2026, and for the 2006 Series B and C, it's 2027. Interest rates on the current bonds are about 3.3% to 3.4%, and this will take it down to a true interest cost of about 2%. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the utility staff is here as well.
Thank you. That's really solid savings.
Yeah.
Questions for...
I thought the chicken ordinance was bad, but this...
It does increase their liquidity.
All right, we will, seeing no questions, we'll go to the public for questions, or comment, pardon me, on ordinance 1915. Seeing none, we're back to council for comments. Councilmember Granger.
Despite the hilarity, I think this is, I mean, I love to hear this. You do this a lot, and I really appreciate it, so it's something I can support. The savings are important to us. Thank you.
Other comment?
I concur. It's always nice to save money, so thank you for your work on this. Would someone care to call the question?
Call the question.
Second.
Questions been called on ordinance 1915, and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Just for the records, I didn't think the puns really stunk that badly. Okay, Councilmember Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Everyone's a comedian, yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Thank you. Sterbaum? Oh, sorry. Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1915 is adopted, 8-0.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1916 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1916 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1916 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater Rate Adjustment. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater to reflect increased costs of supplying wastewater services to customers and to make debt service payments on bond financing for required capital improvements. It also establishes a new surcharge for service provided to lots, parcels of real estate, or buildings located outside the corporate limits of the city. Your committee recommendation is due pass 701.
Thank you, Clerk Volin.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1916 be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Kelson.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I am Vic Kelson, Director of Utilities. I'm accompanied by Laura Pettit, our Assistant Director for Finance, and Jennifer Wilson, who is a consultant with Crowe, who participated and conducted the financial analysis for this request. As in 2016, when we brought our last rate case to council, it was a 22% increase, and at that time, council asked us to come with requests for rate adjustments on a more frequent and regular basis. And at that time, we decided to do the sewer and stormwater rates during the midterm years and the water rates during the presidential years. Last year, we did the stormwater rate, but because of the time and the challenge of doing the cost-of-service study for the sewer utility, we were unable to get that completed in time. So we're bringing it this year, a year later than we'd planned. In addition, both council and our board, and thank you to Mr. Sims for his service there, we've been encouraged to pursue a cost-of-service approach to rate-making for water and for sewer. In the case of sewer, we are allowed to establish customer classes based upon geography, and we've chosen to do that, in this case with a surcharge for customers that live or reside outside of the city limits of the City of Bloomington. The, overall, our rate request will raise about 5% our total, in terms of our total revenues. That will be distributed as a 3% increase for residents of the city who utilize our sewer services, and a 15% increase for customers outside the city limits. In addition to, and, sorry, I got tongue-tied there for a moment. This increase pays for two things. One is inflation in the cost of operation and maintenance of our entire system, and the remainder is to cover capital projects totaling approximately $30 million, new investment in our wastewater plants for modernization and capacity expansion projects. We'll welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Questions for Utilities Director, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, just to make sure, the 12% surcharge for customers who are outside the city limits is based on the cost of providing the service to them.
That's right.
Correct? Thank you.
Other questions, pardon me, from council? Councilmember Volin.
So just to review a couple things to make sure I have it clear, the bulk of the increases for capital improvements, is that right?
That's right, yes.
And can you, again, just give us a brief synopsis from what you discussed in committee about the total potential capacity of the two plants?
Yes, certainly. At this time, the Dillman Road Plant has a capacity, rated capacity of 15 million gallons per day, and the Blue Tripul Plant on the north side has a rated capacity of 6 million gallons per day. IDEM, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, notified us shortly after the 2016 rate was approved that we had exceeded 90% utilization at the Dillman Plant in three consecutive years, which requires us to begin the process of making improvements and increasing the capacity at the Dillman Plant. So that's what brought us to this effort. Also, I neglected to mention Councilmember Volin's question about the number of customers. We have 22,500 and some odd overall. Of those, about 4,000 of them lie outside the city. I don't have access to the exact... I don't have access to the exact number at this time owing to staff vacations, so, but when I get the exact number, we'll email it to you.
Good, yeah, that was actually, another question I wanted to follow up on was what that figure was. And again, just to clarify, there isn't, if I recall correctly, you say that there's no one in the city who will have to pay more because they're on, well, I mean, septic doesn't, is not part of the system at all if they have septic.
That's right.
But no one who's part of the city will pay more, but if someone is annexed, they will only pay more until...
Well, I would presume that if an annexation discussion is going on...
Right.
We will be reworking the analysis of the inside-outside rate while that discussion is going on. So, I would recommend to the council that in the event that such an ordinance was coming along, that we would bring ours at the same time, so that everything would happen simultaneously.
What you're saying, then, is that if an annexation were to occur, the rates would need to be adjusted for the new population, which changes the balance of inside-outside the city?
Precisely.
That's interesting. So, finally, there is, like, we explored this last week, the only distinction that you can make to create classes of users is whether they are in an incorporated place or not.
That's the current state of the case law, yes.
So, those people who argue that they are just outside the city limits, why should they pay more than somebody who's in the city but much farther from the plant? You say to them that you would think about it if the state had a different law, but this is what the state allows you to do.
Exactly, yes.
Interesting. Thank you.
Other questions from council? I had, Councilmember Sterbaum, do you have a question?
Just a little one. Doesn't this give the big users kind of a big break in the city? Like, if you did the 5% across the board increase, they're saving that 2% net, and it's kind of, and as it turns out, the way we're readjusting is the county is picking up that slack for the large users. Do you think that's fair?
Well, the county isn't paying it. The customers that aren't in the city are paying it. So, it's, the purpose of the surcharge is only to cover the difference in the cost of providing the service outside the city. So, another, on the one hand, yes, we're paying, we would be charging a surcharge to customers outside the city. On the other hand, what the analysis shows is that customers inside the city have been subsidizing the service that's provided to the customers that don't reside inside the city. So, it works kind of both ways.
Just the players are different if they're a giant user or an individual?
It works the same way for everyone.
It's just a bigger number.
It's just a bigger number, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. So, my question is if we, let's say we have an area of the county that we annex, I don't care, you know, just even a small area, the people then become residents of the city, and their water charges would go down, that they would no longer be charged that elevated surcharge. Is that correct?
They would be, they would, what we'd have to do is, if you recall the analysis that Crowe presented last week, we did that analysis based on where the customers are and where the pipe lies and so forth. And so, what we would do is do that analysis again, which would yield, probably yield, a new outside rate and a new inside rate. And so, what would happen is when the annexation were complete, all the customers inside the city would pay the new inside rate.
Correct.
All the customers outside the city would pay the new outside rate.
Correct. Thank you.
That's how it would work, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? I had one, just kind of reflection, I guess. I think cost-of-service approach is a good one. It seems fair to me. And as has been already commented by you, Mr. Kelson, it remedies the subsidational growth or geographic expansion outside the city by internalizing those costs so that the user pays essentially for that instead of people who live within the city. So, it makes sense from controlling sprawl position. But you've surely considered that raising the rates might have a negative impact in terms of county residents, say, deciding to build their own septic to avoid that, and that's remedy to some degree in the next ordinance, right?
To some degree, yes.
It's to some degree. So, is that, was that the consideration of you and your board? Is that, I mean, you raise rates, there's going to be a negative impact as well, obviously, in terms of behavior? Is that, is this to address that?
Well, that's a good question. The, in real terms, it turns out to be about $3 a month difference, and that is a significant amount, but it's not likely to be the determining factor about whether someone replaces a septic tank or not. The determining factor is more likely to be whether they have a place that they can put it or not, if they were going to replace it, and also whether the county health department would allow them to replace an existing septic tank. So, there's, those issues are more challenging. And of course, the more customers connect, the better it is for the surface waters, and also the more customers that outside rate would be distributed across. So, if several thousand people got rid of their septic tanks and hooked onto sewer, the outside subsidy would probably go down, because there would be more people served by the same amount of sewer mains. So, those things all kind of work together. It's kind of a complicated formula.
Yeah, I see. How could be complex? Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comments on ordinance 1916. Seeing no public comment, we're back to council for final comment and a recommendation. Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. I think I, well, I said this last time, that the city has an obligation to provide services to city residents, and that includes water. And I think it's appropriate to have a bit of a surcharge for people outside the city if they are receiving city services. And I, you know, I would never say $4 is just a little bit, or $3 is just a little bit, but I do think this customer class and cost-of-services approach is appropriate, and I appreciate your efforts to figure all this out and make it equitable, if you will, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I will be supporting this ordinance as well, and following the humor of my colleagues, I will say, being a part of the Utility Service Board is definitely not a drain. I think the business that you take care of flows unclogged, and it actually pumps me up. Now, seriously, thank you for the comment you made about the staff, and there's many more than what's present here that really, really work well, and I think you should be proud of them. I do expect them to improve and learn more, but we should be happy. Thanks to the consultant, and I also want to thank Attorney Wheeler as well. Everybody puts a lot of work into doing what it is that we have to do. Big difference between rate increases and some possible tax increases, but that's kind of where I'll end with those differences, because one of the things that really concerned me from an individual resident is that we have individual rate, people that could raise certain rates, and we have some that can authorize higher taxes. And in most cases, it's, well, I've got a little bit here, and it's not that much. And I've got a little bit here, and it's not that much. Well, what is the total obligation, and I don't want to say tax, we'll call it an investment, on the advice of one of my colleagues, but what does that total obligation become over time? So, I think that ought to be part of our thinking, you and everyone else, that will raise those rates. I'm happy to hear you mentioned inflation as part of the process earlier, because I was going to suggest it's either tied to that or cost of living or something, but not only just yours, but in addition to all. And I understand that part of this is catching up with some shortcomings that we just have to go, and part of it has to do with growth. But this catching up part, we've heard some of this already with regard to maintenance of parking garages. So, I don't know about my colleagues, but I really don't particularly want to hear about that moving on into the future. So, I'm glad that we are getting up to the point so that we can maintain and enhance as opposed to keep repairing what it is that we've got or behind in on these repairs. So, thank you, I will support it, and thanks for your report. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, and do we have any other comments? Councilmember Volin?
So, if the state, like I said in committee last week, allowed us to do Unigov, then it would be fair for non-city residents to expect to have a say in the setting of these rates, but the state doesn't allow that. They tried the experiment with then-Mayor Luger in 1970, whatever it was, and they did not want to see it happen again. If the state allowed us to create, well, I guess the state could allow the city to join with the county and surrounding counties in the creation of a unified public transit system, but state law does not allow the City of Bloomington system, which is designed for the City of Bloomington, to go outside city limits. So, non-city residents don't have a say in that either. This is the price of not living in the city. It costs money to provide these services. Cities are allowed to incorporate because they're so dense that they can save some money providing services that can't be affordably provided outside a dense area. If the state allowed us to charge for distance for wastewater pipe, we would do that, but the state law does not allow us to make any distinction other than, do you live in an incorporated place or don't you? And because state law does not allow that, we are not offering it, we didn't contemplate it. I think this is, has been an excellent education in the mechanics of municipal, of city government. And I certainly commend the utilities for presenting such a sort of level-headed and relatively simple, reasonable explanation for how these rates are going, and it's righting, I think, a wrong, that, you know, we should have had two classes of rates for a while, so I'm glad we're doing it now. The same went for, what was it? There was a previous, we wanted to have different rates for different classes of users, or rather escalating rates for people who use too much water. The state also disallowed that. So, it seems to me if there are any people outside the city, by the way, we are in the county too, so I don't want to hear people being out in the county, they're outside the city. If there are people outside the city who have a problem with this, well, the state seems to be regulating it quite well, they should have a talk with their state representatives, not like they haven't been. The state is busily doing more to erode home rule and to allow communities to do necessary things like this. So, with that comment made, I just want to say thank you to Utilities Department for their excellent presentation that was, you know, easily grasped and definitely necessary. I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, I appreciate the rational justification of this move. I just think more in terms of region, and I think these lines between city-county are in the ultimate sense arbitrary, and there's unfairness in here and not in here, and there are different ways to think of it, and in my mind, I think we should just be serving the region, and I'm not going to support going this way, but I can see it's going to pass, but that's just how I feel about it. I think we should just think in terms of a region and flat rate across.
Any other comments? Councilmember Volin, did you want to...
Yeah, I just want to say, is there first round comments, other first round comments?
Councilmember Chopra, did you have a comment? Okay. Councilmember Volin?
Simply put, why should people who do not live in the city do not pay the same tax rate and who have complained mightily about it have a right to have this say? I do not understand Councilmember Sterbaum's opinion, even though I understand what he means, I can't fathom, it's the most basic thing, that line is not arbitrary. That line is a line where you pay taxes to support the benefits of a dense city, or you don't pay those taxes. And if that line were so arbitrary, there would not be the uproar that we witnessed two years ago with the question of annexation. So, the big reason people who don't live in the city don't want to be annexed is they don't want to pay extra taxes if they believe rightly or not that they are not getting anything for their dollar. I would argue that it would be record pence for all the things they have been getting and not paying for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember Sterbaum?
I'll just say it's cosmically arbitrary and leave it at that.
Any other comments? I have one. Okay. I don't think it's arbitrary, I think that this makes sense, because I think that it does, it just stands to reason, you're going to require more pipe to extend the services, and we, the people who live compactly in the city should not be subsidizing that. I mean, so, it internalizes costs, it makes sense to me. The costs do go up, you have more cost in energy every year, costs go up in chemicals, piping, and labor and so forth. So, then my second comment was that I want to thank you for coming on a regular basis for these rate increases, coming only every 10 years, which, you know, you were forced to do, because when you came last time, you didn't have a choice in the matter, but people don't think about the fact that they've enjoyed savings for many years. They simply look at the sticker shock, and this avoids it, and this keeps parity with increases in cost, and I think the fact that there's no one objecting is a testament to that. So... Call the question?
Second.
Okay, the question's been called in second, and on ordinance 1916, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eight one. Thank you. Ordinance 1916 is adopted eight to one.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1917 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that ordinance 1917 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1917 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater regarding amending Bloomington Municipal Code 10-08-040 connection fees to allow waiver of those fees in two limited circumstances, to promote conversion of septic to sewer and to complement certain city affordable housing programs. The synopsis is as follows: Ordinance 1917 amends Bloomington Municipal Code Section 10-08-040 entitled wastewater connection fees to give the director of the City of Bloomington Utilities Department the discretion to waive the connection fee for new sewer connections in two limited circumstances. The first is where the application for waiver is made by a department of the City of Bloomington for a single-family residential dwelling affordable housing project as defined by the hand department, using low to moderate income guidelines as outlined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on real estate located within the city limits for the City of Bloomington. The second is where the application for waiver is made by an owner of real property which is located within the city limits... is located within the city limits of the City of Bloomington for the purpose of abandoning an existing septic system or to otherwise protect the sewer separate stormwater sewer system, MS4. These two exceptions to the connection fee promote continued creation of new affordable housing and the reduction of septic system use in the City of Bloomington, projects that both promote improved quality of life. Your committee recommendation is due pass 800. And just for the record, I'd like to note that I made a small correction when I was reading the synopsis with the Bloomington Municipal Code section, I corrected it as I read it to 10-08-040 as opposed to what it says in the synopsis right now, which is
Thank you for that, and thank you for the correction.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1917 be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Wheeler, welcome.
Good evening, Chris Wheeler with City Legal, thank you. The correct citation for the Bloomington Municipal Code is 10.08.140 and should be as such throughout. I'm not sure where we are with that, but just to make sure that we're reflecting that that's the Bloomington Municipal Code section that we are discussing and hoping to amend this evening.
Point of order, Mr. Chair? Will the clerk please clarify?
We were just discussing the fact that the correct section is 140, so.
Okay.
You are, I imagine, going to amend it correctly.
And you corrected it from 040 when you read it.
Right, I said 040, but it should be 140, and I think you're going to do an amendment?
Thank you.
Is there an amendment to offer?
Mr. Wheeler can present first.
All right.
Thank you very much, and I will present as though the amendment hasn't been presented yet, but what we are trying to do this evening, the staff of the City of Bloomington Utilities Department and the City of Bloomington Legal Department are recommending passage of this proposed amendment to Title 10, Section 10-08-140, to create two new programs, or at least to promote programs that the City of Bloomington Utilities believes are advantageous to the benefit of the health and wellness of this society. And those two programs are to allow waivers to be accepted for payment of connection fees to the wastewater system. The first waiver would be for application by the City of Bloomington Housing and Neighborhood Development Department in situations where projects for residential dwelling affordable housing is going on, and that is based upon using low to moderate income guidelines as they outlined by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on real estate that is located solely within the city limits. The second application would be for waiver by an owner of real estate, real property, either in the city limits or outside of city limits, who is wishing to abandon a septic system or to otherwise protect the municipal separate stormwater sewer system. We believe that these are good programs, we believe the amendment is appropriate, and we ask that City Council pass the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Before we go to council questions, we'll entertain the amendment, I think.
I move Amendment 1 to ordinance 1917.
Second.
So this amendment has two parts, one of them is, was brought to my attention by the staff that there was an incorrect reference to Bloomington Municipal Code. It is to be corrected to refer to the section on wastewater rates, or, yeah, which is BMC And the second part of the amendment is to clarify the wording in Section 2B. As Mr. Wheeler just described, I'll just read this short paragraph. Upon application for a waiver by an owner of real property which is adjacent to an easement or public roadway in which a public sewer is located, provided that the public sewer has a capacity to adequately accept the flow for the purpose of abandoning an existing septic system or to otherwise protect the municipal separate stormwater sewer system, MS4. So I think Councilmember Granger and I both felt like the wording was unclear in this section, so this makes it clear that it doesn't have to be somebody within the city limits who's abandoning septic, it could be outside of city limits as long as they are located proximate to public sewer and that there's capacity.
Thank you. Other questions for Councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Granger or city attorneys? And Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, so with respect to the comments that I made in the previous ordinance, you're saying that this, the second part of this amendment does not limit the opportunity to have a stormwater fee waived to somebody living within city limits?
The reasoning is that their use of septic may have an impact on our MS4, on the municipal separate stormwater sewer system. So if getting them off of septic might help improve our stormwater quality, then it's a good idea to waive their fees as well.
I'd like to ask Mr. Wheeler to weigh in on this. Do you have any opinion about this question? Or perhaps?
You want to know whether I have an opinion on that?
I want a general opinion from y'all over there.
The opinion from City of Bloomington Utilities is that this is a very good program, and it wasn't the intentions of the Utilities Department to limit it just to the city. It should be for anybody who has the ability to connect to the sewer system and wishes to abandon their septic.
Okay, Mr. Kelson?
Yes, Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. The, we're talking about how we implement these waivers. In the case of the storm, the MS4 or septic tank waiver, one way that we could handle that would be to have our MS4 program actually reimburse the sewer utility for the lost revenue owing to the waived connection fee. If we were to use, if.
Who would?
Our, we have a storm, our stormwater utility would reimburse the sewer utility.
I see.
For the waiver. If that were the case, we could implement a partnership with the county's stormwater utility, if they were interested in it, to do similar activity outside the city, because they also have a stormwater utility outside the city. And plus, some of the water, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith pointed out, some of the drainage ways that are in the county actually, in some cases, may flow back into, may flow into the city, so we would benefit to some degree from, our MS4 would benefit from some, to some degree from.
That's a very interesting answer, and I want to dig into that point. So you're saying that within the city, the city sewer system would reimburse the stormwater system?
Other way around.
Okay, but outside the city, you wouldn't, but the county might, or a county water system, some county, some out-of-city system.
Yeah, that's completely up in the air, we haven't figured any of that out yet, but this would open up the possibility that we could partner with the county in some fashion on septic tank placement outside the city, so.
Can you see why I might have at least a nominal concern about whether, you know, I mean, despite the fact that it would be a net benefit to the network, should those people who own outside the city not take more responsibility financially for their conversion?
Well, that's actually, and that's actually part of the, part of the question here, and the ordinance only gives us discretion to issue the waivers, it doesn't require that we waive any of these fees. So we will have to come up with rules and policies in working with our board for the actual implementation of all of this. So at this point, we don't have that all worked out yet, but that is certainly something to consider.
I appreciate the answer, but I'm not sure that it's been fully vetted. I mean, like, from a, should I not have the same concern about non-city residents benefiting out of proportion to city residents for this waiver program?
Well, the, what the sewer connection fee pays for, it's a, it's a system development charge, and what it's paying for is the future increase in capacity at the treatment plants. So, so they both, they all, everyone pays the same amount because we treat everybody's flow the same, so that it doesn't, so that's why the connection fee is the same inside and outside. What we do in terms of the MS4 program depends on conversations both inside Utilities, discussions with the board, we'll also entertain conversations with the county to see what kinds of programs we can come up with to really formalize the septic tank replacement program.
So the connection fee covers the increase, the necessary increased capacity at the plant, but it doesn't cover the increased network of pipes?
That's right, because the increase, the network of pipes is actually paid for by the developers as new subdivisions are developed.
And so someone, say, in Broadview or outside the city, is not paying the connection fee or trying to get it waived because of the pipes, it's because of the capacity at the plant?
Precisely, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Stirbaum?
Yeah, thinking about that waiver as an incentive, do you ever get people hooking on whose system has not failed? I mean, do people wait until it fails, or do they ever think, okay, it's working fine, but let's, let's hook on?
Well, we're in the, right now, we're in the midst of a project that's been largely funded by a grant from the CDBG monies to build a new sewer that serves part of the Broadview neighborhood, and that, we have had a lot of inquiries from residents there about how they connect to the sewer and how soon can they do it. I'm sure some of them have failing systems, I'm also sure that some of them just don't want to have to deal with it anymore. One of the things that I think should be an important part of any septic tank waiver program is that the septic tank has to be properly abandoned, that is filled in, you know, properly, properly decommissioned, and the county health department does inspect those kinds of things. So we would, we would try to partner with them to have them certify that it was properly abandoned before we would issue the waiver.
Right, that's what we heard last week, that there's an additional cost to the homeowner to connect, and that cost is the abandonment, the hooking up of the new plumbing sewer line to the old sewer, to the new sewer.
Councilmember Stirbaum?
Yeah, I have a question.
We're trying to address the amendment at this point, and I think your questions are going kind of more far afield to the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
So let's try to keep to the amendment.
Hold that answer for later.
Comment on the, I'm sorry, there, this is questions on the amendment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public, this is on Amendment 1 of ordinance 1917. Seeing none, we're back to council for final comment on the amendment or recommendation. Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I think that my questions continue to, I mean, they're bringing sort of a package of ordinances tonight from Utilities, and the question of inside and outside the city is still a worthy one, even though I understand the, the logic, you know, it's unassailable logic from Mr. Wheeler and Kelson, but I don't think it's unfair to ask the question about, you know, what is fair, what's allowed under state law that would allow us to make it fairer. I support the amendment, but, you know, like, I think we should always be asking those questions about what is fair for the system as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger? Okay, is there a recommendation?
Move, call the question?
Second.
Okay, questions and call in, Amendment 1 of ordinance 1917. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Stirbaum?
Yes.
Vanberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment 1 is adopted nine zero, now we're back to the ordinance 1917 as amended. We're on questions, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Stirbaum because I interrupted him.
I'll finish that question with asking, if you have any idea, does Hand have a loan program that could help incentivize that hook on? Do you have any idea?
Not aware, sorry, I don't know the answer. If you'd like for me to look into that, I'd be happy to do so.
That would actually create an incentive where they don't have that hurdle of the $5,000 to $10,000 cost of connecting and filling the septic.
I know that with most of the housing and urban development federal funding, that funding cannot go towards fees, and this is a fee, and so that is why the waiver program with regards to affordable housing was even contemplated in the first place. So I dare say, we're probably going to find that the answer is no, there is no kind of funding available through Hand that would allow us to do any kind of additional incentivizing to avoid these fees.
You could be right.
Councilmember Volin?
Does Utilities have any kind of a loan program?
We do not.
Is it the kind of thing that is worth considering?
We discussed it in the context of a different program a couple of years ago, and it's not something that we're really capable of doing, we're not a bank, so we don't have the ability to do that.
So another question I have came up while we were talking about the amendment, has there ever been a case where there's been a fire in an area that's poorly supported with sewers, that so much water has been sprayed that it caused any kind of damage, water damage to a nearby home because there wasn't sufficient sewer near it, maybe even not in the city, maybe anywhere? Have you ever heard of such a case? Is that something to worry about?
I don't know of any, that would be a stormwater runoff concern, I'm not sure, although we do have, we have had cases where water mains have broken and done damage to private property, so, but I don't know of any that were related to putting out fires, but I can look into that and let you know.
It's a question worth asking for the future, would you really consider that kind of water, stormwater rather than wastewater, because it's going to have a lot of, you know, the material from the fire in it?
It actually becomes stormwater or sewer water depending on where it goes. So if I go spray 5,000 gallons on a house, it's probably not going to go into the sanitary sewer, it's going to flow across the yard and into the ditch.
Very good.
So that's where it probably goes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? I have one, and that is, Mr. Kelson, are there specific areas where you've identified where stormwater runoff is compromised by septic overflow or where the health department has reported it that would be targeted? In other words, so that, you know, people may not be reading the paper, or they might miss the paper, they might not, they might miss this meeting, not know about the waiver. Are there ways in which we can extend, you know, the information about the waiver to those areas, and are you aware of those areas?
Certainly, if once such a program is established, we would certainly make it, make it our practice to give information about it to a customer who was replacing septic with a sewer connection. And when people do that, we do find out that the reason that they're doing it is they're, they're coming away from, taking out a septic system, and the benefit to the city is first, the MS4 benefits from not having them on septic, it also benefits from properly abandoning the old septic tank. Those things can, abandon septic tanks that were not properly filled in can become significant public health and safety hazards, so there's a lot of benefits to us to offer this incentive so that things are done properly when septic's are abandoned.
And your, and your stormwater engineers are probably aware of some areas where this is occurring?
I'm certain that we have, I'm certain that we have some areas where this is occurring. As, as you know, the council has been very helpful in the last two budget cycles to help us expand our, our MS4 program. We now have a dedicated MS4 coordinator, we're doing a lot more inspections, and we're doing a lot more characterization of the system. That's a project that will be ongoing for the next, next, forever probably, for a very long time. You've also passed the increase in the stormwater fee, and that is underwriting not only the green infrastructure projects that we've talked about, but it would underwrite neighborhood programs, it would underwrite just, and of course, the large capital projects. So we've worked, we've. capital projects. So, we've worked, we've, I think, we've worked with you a lot on stormwater projects, programs for the last couple of years, and certainly our ability to characterize the water quality throughout our network is, we have a lot more capacity for doing that sort of thing now, and those, those things will be happening in the future.
Wonderful. If there are no other questions, then we'll go to the public. There's public comment on ordinance 1917 as amended. Seeing none, we're back to council for final comment. Councilmember Granger?
I do want to thank you for, for this piece of legislation, and I'm urging you to continue your work with the county, because I think if we work together, it'll be a stronger program, and it will benefit the environment all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment? Thank you. This is a wonderful approach, and I wholeheartedly agree. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sims, did you have a comment?
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry, no, I was a little bit late.
Okay.
But one of the things is, is that, and this is my comment, we've talked for several years, and many of us up here in the board, about cost of services studies, and it took us a while to get that completed, and now that it's done, it's kind of frustrating. I mean, I, it's okay to ask certain questions, but we've been through this, and then that's one of the things that we've done, is the cost of services study, and I think it pretty much explains the cost. Now, none of us have to like those costs, but I think it explains those things. And last thing I want to say, the incentive to hooking up to sewer, to our sewer system from a failed septic, let's, let's start all over again. What is the incentive for a person with a septic to hook onto a sewer? I personally think it's pretty obvious, because you want to be on sewer system as opposed to septic, and that is the incentive. So, I don't think we have to give them another 500 bucks or something on top of that to incentivize them to get out of a system that's eventually going to fail and not be part of it anyway. And that's their choice, but with the cost of studies, it costs a little bit more for hookups, but I just remember, it's not been too long ago when it was very cheap to do sewer hook-ons, and it didn't come close to covering the cost of that service. So, all that rolled into that ball, I think, is kind of where we are tonight, and I'll support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I'm a little surprised to hear my colleague say that he's surprised that people are asking questions. It would be incumbent upon the council's representative to the USB to educate us about something that we don't know, but otherwise, that's exactly what this process is for. I'm not sure what questions that he objected to necessarily, and I'm happy to hear from him what, you know, what he, about that, but I feel like my questions were quite well answered and satisfactorily, and I'm supportive of this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
No.
Anyone else's final comment? All right, I'm waiting for a recommendation then.
Second.
I made a comment. The questions have been called in second and on ordinance 1917 as amended. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rala?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sturbaum?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1917 is, is amended, is adopted 9-0. Thank you for presenting and coming this evening. Okay, legislation for first reading, we have one item.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1919 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that ordinance 1919 be introduced and read by the clerk, by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1919 to amend Title 2 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel, regarding amending Title 2 to create a procedure to address conflicts of interest by employees responsible for issuing permits. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance brings the City of Bloomington into compliance with Indiana Code 36127-1 through Indiana Code 36127-4 by creating a formal procedure to ensure that building commissioners, building code officials, and inspectors avoid conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Okay, we are now on additional public comment. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment. Seeing none, we're now at council schedule. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, in your memo tonight, I suggest that you might want to consider a motion to convert the committee of the whole on October 2nd from a, to a regular session. This is now a time of year for us. In this, from the next month, you are spending half of your weeks working on the budget, the other half of those weeks working on normal legislation. That's why you have a first Wednesday that is a committee of the whole. This would change that, would say that is going to be a regular session. It would allow you to take care of some business that will be going out in the packet this week and also, no, in next week's packet. But more importantly, if the UDO is ready for your consideration at that time, that it would allow you to vote on your schedule for the UDO and meet our statutory obligation to take up the UDO at the first regular meeting after it's been handed to us. So, that's the story behind this suggestion.
Thank you. Can we get a motion on the table?
I'm going to change the meeting scheduled for October 2nd from a committee of the whole to a regular session.
Second.
Okay, this is apparently debatable and amendable, and requires a majority. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So, what were we going to discuss at committee of the whole that we now have to discuss another time?
Sure. One was just introduced a few moments ago. Another is a resolution that regarding Declaration of an Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Well, we can do that at a regular session, too. That can be done at the regular session, yes.
Yes, and the third has to do with authorizing or passing an inducement resolution to allow private activity bonds for the housing authority. This follows on what you did earlier this year, allowing them, changing the rules of our agreement so they could do this, and now it's coming forward. At this point, those are the three that I know about. The fourth would be a schedule for the UDO.
So, what, according to what you know at this moment, what we would have as committee of the whole on October 2nd would be the ordinance 1919, the Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the Bloomington Housing Authority. So, I know that the Indigenous Peoples' Day doesn't necessarily need a committee meeting, so that could still go on that night, but the other two, so when would they be heard in committee? Would that be moving them up in the schedule or moving them back, and does that have any impact on their timeline?
They're both resolutions. No, one is, one is an ordinance, and the other's a resolution. They would not get a committee of the whole. So, if you were not ready to take them up, you could, they could be postponed until the 16th without any harm, I think, to either one of them.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other comment or questions? Call the question?
Second.
Okay, this is to change the committee of the whole on, it's October 2nd, to a regular session meeting for the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider that changed then. Anything else on schedule? Mr. Sherman?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for Sherman?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.